So line item deferred outflows of resources. This is again related to the city's participation in loggers. So their actuary comes up with certain amounts due to differences between what they estimate will happen and what actually happens as far as service of active participants, deferred participants or retirees, what they expect to happen with pension plan investments and what actually happens. So the result of those differences is reported as a deferred outflow of resources. The city also has a deferred inflow of resources related to that that I'll mention in a minute. But that line item there decreased by 281,000 during the year, again just based on the amounts reported by the pension plan. Total liability decreased by about 328,000 and that's really just due to the city making its annual debt service payment on its capital leases. And the last line item that I just mentioned is the deferred inflows of resources component related again to the loggers pension plan and that amount will reduce pension expense in the future. So as you can see, the, the loggers pension plan, these assets and liabilities can have significant swings each year and a lot of those again are just due to timing differences when things get recognized related to the pension plan. On the following page, page three, this is a summarized version of the statement of activities or the income statement. Just big picture, total revenues increased by about 733,000 during fiscal year eighteen. This was really the result of three things. There was an increase in charges for services really in those utility funds of about 256,000. An increase in operating grants that the city received during the year of about 166,000. And the city had quite a few capital contributions totaling about 350,000 during fiscal year eighteen. So I think some streets, new infrastructure and a little bit of equipment was donated to the city during fiscal year eighteen. So those are recognized as revenues in the government-wide income statement. And lastly, total expenses decreased by about 302,000. Most of the decrease can be found in the general government, public works and electric spending lines. So there were some, you know, cuts there or just, you know, wiseening. And then I got my items. That is obviously very big picture of the audited financial statements. So if there are any questions, I know you guys probably haven't had time to go through the audited financial statements in detail. If you have time to do so later and have questions, Heather certainly knows how to get a hold of me. Okay. That's it for tonight. Okay? All right. Well, the next report is the auditor's communication letter. So if you're looking at these prior documents packets, it was actually going to be the next one. It'll be the first letter I've done. So we issue this letter each year. It includes correspondence which require to be communicated to those charged with governance by our professional standards. So it's really just a report about the audit process and how things went. So we have to, I would put the information each year. There were really no significant changes from the prior year, so I just wanted to highlight a few things. As I mentioned previously, there were no changes in accounting policies during the year. There will be one minor change coming up in a year or two related to fiduciary activities. It's not significant enough to mention in this letter. Heather and Tara and our team will work through that in the coming years. We did evaluate the estimates affecting the financial statements. Since these are not just cash basis financial statements, there are estimates involved in putting them together. So we do take a look at those and make sure that they're reasonable in relation to the city's financial statements. We also evaluate the disclosures in the financial statements to make sure that all the required disclosures are included and agree and reconcile to the actual financial statements. They're clear and understandable to the reader, the readers, the users of your financial statements. One thing that we like to point out each year is that we do provide assistance in converting the city's books from essentially the cash basis of accounting during the year to the accrual basis of accounting that you see in these audited financial statements. So we do point that out in this letter. Whenever we propose adjustments to convert from the cash basis to the accrual basis, we do make sure that management agrees with and accepts the entries that we're proposing. And ultimately, management did and they reflected in these audited financial statements. And lastly, we always like to be able to report that we didn't have any disagreements with management about any upcoming or other issues and we didn't have any significant difficulties in performing our audits. Any questions about that letter before I move on to the last one? Okay. The last one in the back of your second packet is from the management letter. So the purpose of a financial statement audit is to give an opinion on the financial statements and not on internal control. So we are not doing that here. We're not providing any sort of opinion or assurance on internal control. But as I mentioned earlier, when we do our risk assessment process, we consider internal control and if we have any findings or recommendations, we would report them in this letter. This letter probably looks pretty consistent with prior years. We did not identify any material weaknesses. The letter does state that. But we do have two recurring significant deficiencies that we're including in the letter. The first is that, again, we prepare the financial statement. So we are required by our professional standards to let management and the board know that we do that sometimes when we do, which is a common practice for auditors. Because sometimes it raises questions, are your auditors a part of your internal control? So we have to report that as a basis of significant deficiency in the management letter when we do that. Like I said, it's a common practice for us as auditors to do, so we're not recommending any changes in what the city's doing. We just ask if they continue to assist us with that year-end assistance that we provide in getting the books converted from cash basis to the accrual basis. The other significant deficiency is related to the utility billing system. We've noted in the letter that really anyone that has access to the system has full access to the system. And I think that might just be a limitation of the system or it might just be something that the city has chosen to do just due to the limited, you know, staff and resources that the city has. Obviously, that presents some risks. There are some mitigating controls in place, but we just wanted to make sure that management and the board were aware of that again this year.
That's been a reoccurring thing. I mean, that's blown up every...
It happens a lot because we have a small office and everybody needs to have certain accesses.
Exactly.
Just to be able to function on a daily basis.
Yeah, and the service backups for each other. So, yeah, there's a cost benefit to every internal control that you consider. So, yeah, we just wanted to make sure we pointed that out again this year. And then last but not least, we do have on the last page of our management letter just some other recommendations. These are really just best practices. So nothing that rises to the level of a significant deficiency or a material weakness. And these are recurring kind of comments from prior years too that we just wanted to let management and the board know about. One is related to the Summit accounting system. There are just some fund accounting issues that have presented some challenges in recent years. Heather's very familiar with those. We, you know, continue working through them. We even talked before this meeting about making some changes to the account structure and the, the system to help really define individual funds and make sure that all of the, there's no concerns of activity being reported or included in the general ledger, but just some nuances with the system and things kind of get mixed up sometimes. And then the last one is related to inter-fund balances. Again, not a huge deal, this is just the best practice. Some of the balances due to and from certain funds of the city originated a few years ago and just over time haven't gotten settled. So we've been recommending to a lot of our municipal clients that those, you know, either get repaid, the funds repay each other, or we just write off those balances. Any questions about that last report? Okay. You guys were eating with me tonight. I was expecting at least a question or two. Well, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to come tonight. We put many reports to you. Again, if you have questions about anything later, Heather knows how to get a hold of me and we appreciate the opportunity to do the audit. We've got a good relationship with the city and we appreciate all the help that Heather has to provide to us.
We appreciate all the help you provide to us.
How, how long has William Kieper's been doing our audit?
That's a good question. Certainly three days is my time. I hope I can speak first. I think, so I've worked for him for ten years, but I think we've probably been doing the audit at least, I would say even twenty.
Maybe.
Yeah.
It was since I've been here.
Yeah.
So, I know. That's fourteen.
Yeah, yeah. And the city administrator that predated Lynn, I believe I worked with him at one point. So, yeah, I would say at least twenty years. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you all so much. Again, as I'm going to be saying after you review the reports.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take it back home.
Thank you so much.
And she did mention, you know, the, the chart accounts and it's just kind of funky how the things, at the end of the year, you do like a, a year-end roll. But we have all of our special revenue funds part of an O2. So whenever you do have that year-end roll and you're clearing everything out for the new fiscal year, everybody has like an O2 beginning number, account number, rolls into that first O2 number. But we have like an O2, O1, O3, and an O2, O1, O2, and, you know, and they should all be separate, but the way the system rolls it in, it rolls it all into one. So it's just very confusing. But I have actually completed a chart of accounts conversion, which I did last year and it didn't get converted. They, Summit got really busy, but we have that ready to go and hopefully we'll have it for the next budget.
Don't we usually get this earlier in the year?
Yes.
Is that because of changes?
Yes, yes.
Yes, and typically, and we will have it earlier next year, but, yes.
What about the inter-fund balances? Is that something you want to address?
I'm, to be honest, I'm not really sure what she's talking about. I feel a little bit of clarification on that.
Inter-fund balance transfers, usually like, you know, how you put out a resolution when the electric fund funded money for the rec center and there was an actual resolution to track that so that you would know this is where that money came from. So oftentimes, you can have inter-fund transfers from non-restricted accounts. So the electric fund may support roads and whatever else. And I believe that is what she's talking about. And just in a look through the audit report, I noted a section on there. So if it's been paid back, it just needs to be cleared. If you're not intending on paying it back, then it needs to be, that needs to be zeroed out.
We've, we've been doing that for several years, transferring money from the electric fund to the electric fund itself.
We typically have, and that's always budgeted and there's always a motion at the beginning of the year to do that.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we need to do that by resolution instead of a motion. I don't know if that makes a difference, but...
Usually, it's just if there's like significant one where you need 350,000 out. And most typically, they're chartered by a resolution because, you know, you'll typically do those inter-fund transfers through an original budget ordinance or resolution per year. That one was just significant enough.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Open the floor for comments from citizens. Make a, make a comment to set your aim and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Chris Cox, 448 South Jefferson. I'm just here to observe and see if there's a good work here.
All right. Thanks very much. Do you mind in the back? You want to tell us who you are and why you're here?
Oh, you're talking about, yeah. Rob Ditto, 215 Sunset Lane. This is just part of Tucker's, part of, or an arrow of light, nothing come and get a little bit, a better idea of city government.
Okay.
And he's here because I need at least two. So that I have another daughter, gonna have at least two kids.
All right. Thank you very much. Are you intrigued yet?
Uh, well, that's interesting.
All right. Well, we'll close the comments from citizens. Move on to the action agenda. Finance and permits and license and nothing's got to be associated. Legal. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. No pet remains allowed in city cemetery, so the ordinance, would you like to do some further discussion?
We have had a situation arise where someone wanted to bury the remains of their cat with them in the city cemetery and after our board's vote to not allow that, we did create this, our city created this ordinance to define that we will only allow the remains of, uh, human remains to be buried in the cemetery.
You got to write to the board on this.
There was one sign in there and I can't find it anymore, but I have to look for it. It was serious. Do you have the ordinance signed? Our cremated remains, would they be anything other than a dead human body?
Oh. Number 44. Number 44 of your packet.
It used to say, it used to say, the cremated remains of a dead body. So, I mean, I'm just clarifying that dead, that is a human body. I know it's...
I'm just curious. I saw that now.
I just want, I just wanted to clarify that if it references a body, it is a, a human.
Okay. All right. Oliver, do you want to get into business, please?
Um, I don't have it in front of me yet. Because I lost it.
Oh, sorry.
All right. I made a motion that, oh, we need bill number...
2259.
2259? I made a motion that we adopt, uh, let me do my thing. Uh, that we adopt, uh, move the bill number 2259 to give it its first reading by title only.
Second. All right. I have motion second to bill number 2259 to give it its first reading by title only. All of the fairer side. All right, host. Continue, please.
An ordinance to amend section six dash one of the city of Centralia Code to amend the definition of dead bodies to include only human remains. I move that bill number 225, uh, 2259 to give it a second reading by title only.
Second. I have motion second to bill number 2259 to give it a second reading by title only. All of the fairer side. All right, host. Continue, please.
An ordinance to amend section six dash one of the city of Centralia Code to amend the definition of dead bodies to include, uh, include only human remains. I move that, uh, bill number 2259 to be adopted by roll call.
Second. I have motion second to bill number 2259 to be adopted by roll call. All of the fairer side. All right, host. Roll call, please, turn.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
No.
Alderman Magley?
No.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
All right, that's 42.
Yes.
All right. By your vote, bill number 2259 passes and now becomes ordinance number...
2989.
All right. Commending the formal written policy resolution for reimbursement for maintaining a personal mobile phone for certain employees of the city of Centralia. So the resolution requires one reading. We talked about this last week.
We discussed it last week, so just...
All right. Alderman Hudson, would you introduce us, please?
Bill number? Move that bill number 2260 be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have motion second to bill number 2260 to give it its first reading by title only. All of the fairer side. All right, host. Continue, please.
A resolution of the city of Centralia, Missouri, to amend the adopted formal written policy for reimbursement of expenses related to maintaining a personal mobile phone for certain employees of the city of Centralia, Missouri. It's a resolution, section one, right? So move that bill number 2260 be adopted by roll call.
Second. I have motion second to bill number 2260 be adopted by roll call. All of the fairer side. All right, host. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
All right. By your vote, bill number 2260 passes and now becomes resolution number...
R-18-11.
Purchasing, accepting the bid from Christianson Construction Company for repairs of the intersection of Lakeview Street and Jefferson Street in the amount of $18,525. As far as motion.
We'd like to point out that Alderman Borman noted that there is a survey marker right in the middle of the street. And so I, I did just message Mike Corsey so he's aware Christianson's going to fill around that so as not to disturb it. So, uh, to, we did address that. We're not aware of that until we find out.
That quote is in your packet on page 48. Is that something that could be moved and not be an obstacle?
You mean the survey marker?
Yeah.
I, I don't think so. I was like, I, from what I understand from, I can let Don explain, but I don't think so, not without significant interference and other aspects of the city survey.
You can put a monument box in, it's over, it, put the lid up on it. But it's there, it's flush with pavement.
How long has it been there?
Um, this particular one? Since Jefferson Street was put in there, the intersection was put in. It's shortly after that.
Is it Jefferson Street or is it?
No, it's in Jefferson.
Right in the middle, huh?
Right in the intersection.
That seems like an odd place to put a monument.
Well, it's because they put the road along the lines, which is not uncommon.
How do you know it's there? Can you see something? Does it like that?
Because I've surveyed it.
Uh, is there like a rod or something?
There's a marker that's flush with pavement there.
So what would it take to put a monument cover on it?
Yeah, it's kind of, it's like a valve cover box. Uh, you ever use, put one of those in? It could be raised as you put...
Overladen. Okay.
So Christianson, we don't think it'll be an issue?
No, Mike, it's no problem.
I mean, are they, they're milling this out, they're putting it back to the same old nation basically, right?
Yes.
When there's no reason to do anything.
I make a motion to accept the bid from Christianson Construction for the amount of $18,525.
I have a motion second to accept the bid from Christianson. All of the fairer side.
All right.
Host. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Accepting the best bid for a three-phase pad monitor transformer for the...
I didn't actually submit the second artist to the three phase. Switched it down.
Well, it looks like the weight that's over here, there's a, well, move to the accept the best bid for the transformer from the weight Transformers USA for total of $7,887. Second. I have motion second to accept the bid from the weight Transformers in the amount of $7,887. All of the fairer side. All right, host. All right, thank you. Keep up this in Missouri.
Lowest price, shortest delivery in Missouri.
Yeah. All right. We're accepting the best bid for the Cradle Point Supplies for MDTs in the police cars. This is also a motion. And we talked about this last week. Any questions?
I make the motion to accept the best bid from CWB dash, CWBW dash two. Unkind scene. Following $9,530 makes sense.
Second. I have motion second to accept the lowest bid from CWG. The amount of $9,530 makes sense. All of the fairer side. All right. Moving right along. To Randolph Road Decision. So there's a motion. The information is in your packet on page 51.
All right. I got a question. This is confusing. I used to, is that for 38 foot up to the intersection?
On which one?
On...
So...
On one through four.
Those were different than options five and six.
Right.
So, the, uh, four.
Cause I wonder what alternate one and alternate two are and...
Alternate one was paved the middle third of Randolph Road. Alternate two is paved the northern third. And then if you did all of it, pave all of it, it was the...
Oh, okay.
The 605.
Okay.
So that was like a gravel option for parts of it. That's four.
So the first four options are this, that width all the way through? From 22 all the way to...
Yes. Yes.
Highway 22 is one again, 22 feet.
Twenty feet.
But our code specifically says that we have to do 38.
We have to do 38.
Mm-hmm. So whatever option, unless it's 38 with curb and gutter, then we have to go to the board of adjustment.
At some point in time.
Before we can do this project. I mean, all we're going to do is make a decision on which direction we want to go and then we have to set up a hearing in front of the board of adjustment. And probably talk to the state then.
Yeah. And keep in mind that until we actually sign the contract with the contractor, we're not obligated to move forward and do the project.
Thanks.
We're not obligated by the grant funds to go through with the project. If the bids come in way low, great, we can do the project. If they don't come in low enough, then, uh, then we don't have to pull trigger and move forward.
I have a handful of conversations about this over the last couple of weeks and I have yet to have one person tell me they're in favor of this city residents.
And it's option number seven.
I mean, nobody in the city of them's going to be favored for, for the streets they drive on that.
Right.
It are rough. And they're going to have a nice street up south of town or north of town.
But keep in mind that if we do nothing, then, you know, kind of reneged on the agreement that we made with, with Mr. Fink at his, uh, job expansion. And we'll have to, uh, not accept that $200,000 grant for the, I don't know.
But that doesn't hurt him in any way.
Uh, although he doesn't get a road. That's only the thing that, you know...
But he was probably going to add, he was probably going to add on the business anyway.
He was planning the expansion when he spoke to us before this.
Yeah.
All right, but we do have dedicated money that's there and we won't have the $200,000. So when we, at some point in the future, decide to do this, those $200,000 we won't have.
Could you say we can't file for the grant again?
And we can't.
But you, but this grant was tied to jobs and so you have to wait till there's an expansion.
Yeah, wait till another business moves out there or he, again, expands and if, uh, you know, chances are the way we treat him this time might, uh...
If he decides to go elsewhere with his...
He could go elsewhere with his, yeah, with his intention. So just things to keep in mind.
It's a lot of money and like I said, we have, I hear nothing but complaints about the roads in this town. Uh, and granted, I do, they're true. That's what's bad, they're true. And then all of a sudden, we build one road and of course, Chris is a friend of mine and a customer of mine and that's, you can't look at it that way.
Right.
You gotta look at it like it's your own business. Is it smart or stupid? And that's, uh, since James is not here.
I mean, it does open up an area for development.
Right.
Which could bring in more money and more jobs in the future.
But if that...
Downside is it heats up our street budget.
Yes, a lot.
A lot.
If that arises, we could maybe do it. If, if jobs come in here and they needed that road, then we could look at it again.
Well, but the way a lot of these things go is by the time you get the road in, they would have built elsewhere.
I understand, but there's no land out there. There's land, but we, there's farmers on it. But there's two or three businesses out there and they don't care except for the one, except for the one, that's Chris.
Well, and, uh, there's two landlords there. I mean, the one has no plans at this point, but Chris Fink has plans for it to do more in the future. From what I understand. Probably it's, it's, there's a downside on both sides.
And then from a, from a budget perspective, it's $250,000 if we went with option four because we have the, with the grant, the other 150-ish, I don't remember the exact number. So it's $250,000. That's a lot of roads in the town. That's a lot of roads in the town. And do we have any other businesses expressing interest in moving out there? If we had, if we had two or three businesses talking to us, I think it would be a slam dunk, let's do it.
That's true, but the way development works in a lot of these things with businesses, if they're looking for sites that are pretty well.
Almost settled already, yeah.
And without a road in there, they're not gonna wait on that road, they'll go elsewhere.
Did we find out what it will cost us to do the road up to Remington?
Yeah, that's the first option.
The base bid, the first one, option one.
But we don't get a grant if we just do that either.
I don't believe so, because it doesn't benefit the business.
Right.
And that's four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars.
Just to do the pass Remington four hundred, their whole project's eight hundred thousand.
Because it's the. Because of what everything that they have to do, I guess there's, well, the way he explained it.
I mean, I guess what you said earlier.
Yeah.
What if we go on with this and see what the bids come in, and we're not obligated, no.
Right.
And if the, if the bids come in high, I mean, we tried. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
And I think that's what we're looking for tonight, is to pick an option. So we go out, start asking the right questions, and go out for bid, and see what the bids come in. Like I said, if they're too high, we can scratch it. If they're, if they come in lower than what's expected.
We have another discussion. Wow. And that's not gonna cost anything.
Well, there's engineering work that's being done that.
Yeah.
If we kill it tonight, the engineering work stops.
And we still need to acquire the easements, because we're waiting on the decision of the board on how wide your road is. I haven't gone to obtain the easements, because we're still working on it. So there will be costs and times associated with acquiring the easements as well, prior to awarding of the bid.
Well, the other bids we've seen have been plus or minus ten percent. I think the Maze Meadows came in just about ten percent less than what was originally estimated. So if we knock ten percent off one of these, does that change anybody's opinion? And that's. I mean, just before we go through the additional expense, if, if we looked at option four, which is the cheapest one here, six hundred and five thousand dollars, if they came in at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and if we're having heartburn over it already, would that, would that change your mind? Instead of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the budget, it's two hundred thousand dollars. That's a year's, more than a year's of what we, more than a year's budget of what we spend on the roads in the state.
You may remember what, what it cost when we did that.
It was a lot, because they had to change order.
Yeah.
You had to demo, you had to demo it too.
It was a lot, because we had to change order.
My change order really didn't have that much. The contractor was very nice to us.
So, just projected for the next year, twenty nineteen, these numbers might be different when you go out for bid. But we had estimated that we would spend two hundred and thirty-seven thousand in overlays in twenty nineteen. So if we do this project, we're gonna have to shuffle some of those projects and some of the streets to a different year. It would not be done if she. Who wouldn't have it?
Two hundred and thirty-seven is what's there, I mean, two hundred and fifty is what we'll be looking at.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
I think it's hard to defend that statement.
I mean, even the cheapest option of option four is not one that I would recommend. Because you get a twenty-four foot street all the way through, that's gonna add curb and gutter to it at some point in the future, on both sides, which becomes twice as expensive.
Yeah, maybe prices will go down in the future.
Labor's going the other direction.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we should go with option seven. The one we talked about.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
Second?
All right, a motion and second that we. We'll throw off on this Randolph Road project. And stop following engineering.
Does it expand on engineering so far?
What, what do we spread on engineering so far?
Um, I, I know it was supposed to be seventy, but I think we've spent about forty.
Some number less than seventy.
Yeah, some of what is left is for construction staking and construction monitoring. And doing bids and everything, so I mean, you gotta realize there's still a fair chunk left.
Yeah. All right, so I have a motion and second on the floor to scrap this project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right. Can you do a little vote? Can you do a little vote, please?
Alderman Lee?
What's the motion again?
To not surrender with the Randolph Road project. So turn down the two hundred thousand dollar grant. And tell Mr. Fink, sorry, we cannot afford this project at this time.
No.
Alderman has it.
So no is to turn it down?
No. No is to continue on and go with the project.
Yes.
So, okay. A yes vote means that you don't wanna do the project.
It's a yes for option seven. Four.
Alderman, Alderman?
Well, I understand the sentiment, and I don't necessarily disagree with it. We lose two hundred thousand dollars, we leave a hundred thousand dollars plus in an account that we can't use for anything else. And the cost of construction is gonna do nothing but go up in the future. It's not gonna get cheaper. No.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Nagels?
I'm undecided.
You can't do that. You can't do that.
I don't get their base bid on option one to Remington Road. I mean, that's half, a little over half the money.
Yes, and I don't understand that either.
That's.
That's why I think we need to see a bid.
That's throwing me for a loop.
Well, that's kinda why I think we oughta go for bits.
A real. They're saying from twenty-two, pass Remington Road's five hundred thousand dollars. And the whole project's seven hundred and eighty-seven.
Which, because if we stop now, we're not gonna get a complete seven hundred.
I know, but, but point of work here, you guys are in the middle of a vote. I'm sorry to just step in, but it's a yes or no, and I appreciate the comment, but. We don't, we've already had discussion on this prior to, so we're in the middle of a vote, so sorry, just a yes or no, please, sorry.
No.
We have time.
It's not finished.
We're tied?
It's not finished.
So, I wanna vote no. And I want to go forward with getting bids for the project to Randolph Road. So with that, I'm gonna recommend that we look at option four as the cheapest one on there. I know everyone does not agree with option four, but it is two feet wider than Highway twenty-two. And it would get a road all the way up to the things.
But, but it's the most expensive option for adding all the way.
I don't know. Could be.
No, not it could be. It is. Add curb and gutter on both sides is the most expensive option.
I think, I think you're putting this like a compromise. We had nos and yeses, and so let's, let's do something.
We're ready, we gotta do something. So now I have to pick an option that we wanna go with.
That doesn't mean we can't go with more than one option on, for bits.
Right. We can go with option four and have an alternate of adding the curb and gutter. Well, you wouldn't curb and gutter a twenty-four foot wide street.
No, curb and gutter a thirty-eight foot. Well, I'd eat up the Remington.
You're gonna get apples to apples there, aren't we?
Which depends on how they structure the options. Yes.
I don't think it makes sense to go through the engineering work of multiple options and the easement work that needs to be done for multiple options.
The easement is gonna be the same regardless.
Forty feet?
No, sixty feet.
Sixty feet?
Because that's.
That's right, it is, yeah.
But we already have forty. We already had, we had, we had twenty? We have an easement right now.
We have half of it, we have thirty.
Thirty.
For, for a portion that Fink and Lee.
So when you ask for the easement, do you go, well, we might do this, or we might do this?
You have to have a definite, that's why, that's why I come off this, because when you go to the landowner, you have to ask the, and I understand and appreciate the sixty foot, but your, the landowners are going to want to know specifically and with specificity, what are you doing? What did the SRF send to us? It does say that we have to, with specificity, describe the project. That's why I've been waiting, because I need that specificity with what exactly you're doing. And as Heather's pointed out, you have to go through your board of adjustments, because even an entity like the city cannot violate its own ordinance.
Right.
You will need to eventually amend your ordinance to allow for this specific street to be carved out from the rest of the way you handle your roads. You cannot grant a variance. A variance is a very strict and it should not be used often sort of situation. So you will also need to amend your ordinances to specifically carve out Randolph Road as an exception to all of your other zoning, planning and zoning. That will require a public hearing. And so I was making sure everybody understands, as you do this going forward, the process that this is gonna take.
Which probably will be done regardless.
Sure, yeah.
But the, the easement itself, I mean, the ordinance basically says for a commercial street, it's sixty foot.
But I don't know, I mean, if it's sixty feet, I don't know if you guys are gonna alter that for this, because you're making other changes potentially to this road. But again, we have to have specificity with exactly what you're doing with the road, before we approach the landowner and the easement.
Well, if you're gonna eventually expand the road to the full thirty-eight foot, you're gonna want the full sixty foot of roadway.
Do we have to do that? If we ask for thirty-eight, which we should, we have to go to thirty-eight, or, or what if we come in and do a twenty-four?
So, so what, what happens is, I just need to know from, from you all, are we doing twenty-four feet wide with no curb and gutter and it's gravel? Are you doing, I mean, I'm just reading the options here. I need to be able to take to landowner A, this is what we are putting on the season, this is the type of road, this is how wide it is going to be, regardless of the entire sixty feet, I understand and appreciate that on the side. Your landowner needs to know what the road's going to look like in order to ask for the easement per the SRF guidelines.
Look the city require.
Right.
Yeah, no brand here.
We wouldn't change the ordinance. For, for this one specific.
Yeah.
We can change it to get from, but we have to get permission first.
Do we need to ask the board of directors for? We, we, I mean, this isn't a very situation as far as.
It's not, you're gonna be changing.
We just change the ordinance.
Correct.
We don't need to go to the board of adjustments for that.
Yes, you do, because anytime you change, anytime you change your ordinance, according to your ordinances, this is a zoning statute, or this is a zoning ordinance. So it has to be, first, it has to go through your board of adjustments for recommendation and review and evaluation in a public hearing. They then take your recommendation to the full board here, and you vote to change the ordinance.
Okay.
May I motion on option? To move forward with.
We can motion for moving forward, we'll move forward with option number four.
Second? Motion second to move forward with option four.
Let's say specifically for the quoting process.
Are you talking about all the way through then? From twenty-two all the way up?
Um, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, that's a slight.
Option four.
Yeah.
Yeah. Twenty-four foot, all the way.
No curb and gutter.
With the, we had an alternate for curb and gutter up to Remington?
I don't, if you wanna do that, eventually you're supposed to need it to be thirty-eight feet. But that isn't at the.
No, that's fine.
That's what we wanna do, right? Eventually.
Right. But, but there, I mean, if you put an option on there, you put any options on there you want. You can put the option on there that maybe, uh, you know, option one could be that it'll be curb and gutter all the way up to Remington. You know, that would.
Alternate one.
Yes, it'd be twenty-four foot base bid, and then it would be thirty-eight foot for the alternate. You know, you're adding that much.
Can we bid both ways?
Yes.
Yeah, you bid the base bid would be twenty-four feet all the way along.
And then bid with the curb and gutter up.
Bid it.
And you can bid, and you can, and you can do that in several options. You can do it all the way to anything, you can do it all the way to north end.
Well, we'll see how much money you're talking about.
Yeah, so. All right, I have motion to go with option four, twenty-four foot wide, all the way up to, from twenty-two all the way up. And the second? The second?
Yeah.
I have motion second for option four. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
So can I just clarify, do you guys want me to start with the easement process, or wait until you get the bids? I'm just curious, I mean.
What should we do?
It doesn't hurt to get the easement regardless.
Yeah.
So, I mean, now that I have the description with, with option four, which is. Heather all good at me, I'll get her. But I will, I will approach and put that into the letter to the landowners to approach them for the easement at this time. So that's what I, that's what I'll start doing.
All right.
Tomorrow, just making sure.
So.
This is the whole thing is for.
All right.
So we did easement for thirty-eight foot or twenty-four foot?
You're gonna get, they, they have a description of the easement, so I just need the actual description, like what the road's gonna look like now that we have it. This is what I need to put into the letter. They actually have the easement language, the E S D S to describe that. So I just need to put this into the letter, along with their easement description.
All right. Moving right along. New business, various appointments. I have one application for firefighter. The name is.
Andrew.
Andrew Power. I'm talking with Dean. So possibly on December third, we'll be able to. I do have his application and resume in my office, if anyone wants to see it. It's valuable. I, I talked with Danny tonight, and he hadn't seen it yet, so I wanna, I wanna let him look at it first, uh, before I do this one. He is, Andrew is currently with the Boone County Fire District, so he has some experience. But I wanna let Danny make that decision first, so. City administrator?
Hi, live out the report for October in packet. Any questions, if I know? Then we need to set a special meeting date for October third. I need motion to do that.
December third, December.
December third, yes.
She said October, didn't she? She wanted that.
Getting it out there, and we'll move the bets.
Um, this should, we should have everything ready for the funding for the rest of our purchase.
So the reassignment. Special meeting on December third?
Yes.
I have motion?
Second.
And second to have a special meeting on December third, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And then if you can just be looking at your calendars to set a date for in January for a budget work session, or if you've kind of, you guys have done those before. So hopefully by then, I'll have a better idea on our part of accounts conversion. And then I will have a chance to talk to all of the department heads, and if things ironed out. So January looks better for me and that works for you all. So just look at your calendars and let me know. A few dates, please.
All right. City attorney?
So update on the U T V A T V ordinance. I did craft some language, and I sent that over to chief, and so Lieutenant Gray is just going to weigh in on that as well. And I don't know if anybody else is, you know, wants our law enforcement ways on it, and it'll circulate, and the board will have a chance to review it. But I do have a first draft of a proposed change to the ordinance out there for, like I said, the police force to kind of look at it first, since they're going to be the ones enforcing it if there were any questions. And on the purchase of the land associated with the wastewater application, um, the attorney that is involved representing me, the seller at this point in time, contacted me on Friday with some questions about the contract that we sent to them. I returned his phone call, and I guess he is out through the Thanksgiving holiday this week. So his secretary, the woman that I spoke with, his administrative assistant paralegal, um, said he might check voicemail. Um, but doesn't, I guess typically respond to emails over the Thanksgiving or vacation time. So I'm kind of at a point where I, I need to speak to those, the seller's attorneys to kind of move forward. They have a revised contract out there, but we still don't have anything finalized. So I wanted to give you an update on that real quick. And on the prosecution piece.
And on the prosecution piece, I wanted to make sure you were aware that Judge Bradley is being replaced by Stephanie Morrell. She will be your new judge. She will be taking over your municipal court duties, starting with the January municipal court date. And are there any questions about municipal court? Yes, yeah?
Uh, there was some discussion that they may move municipal court out of Centralea to Boone County.
So originally, the court, the presiding judges over the circuit have control over where your municipal court could be held, and generally, you know, a lot of them have consolidated with Boone County. From what I understand, at this point in time, Judge Morrell has no problem with it being hosted here. So, as I understand it currently right now, today, Centralea Municipal Court is not moving. So it will, it will remain here in, in Centralea, in your city. And again, the Boone County Court and the presiding judge always have control over that, that's something they would, you know, basically inform the city that, hey, we're gonna move it, but really, we don't have any sort of control over that, or a dog in the fight. So, but right now, your municipal court should stay here, so that's a positive for the community.
Great, thank you.
Was there any particular reason why Bradley's not been in there anymore?
He's retiring. He's completely, he's completely retiring, and Judge Morrell was voted in in the recent election to replace him. As I think he'll be replaced.
Big shoes to fill.
There are some big shoes to fill, so.
Have you worked with Judge Morrell before?
I have known, it's gonna be hard to call her Judge Morrell, but I have known Stephanie for nearly the entire time I have practiced law. She and I went to undergrad together, so I have some stories on Stephanie from before she went to law school, so...
Remember that's on camera.
I, I, well, they're, they're positive stories, but it's, when you know somebody, try to know them in the background, it's hard to look at her and call her Judge Morrell, although I think she's going to be fantastic, so I decided her...
Um...
Anything else?
I'm sorry, I'd be going after S A R, but, um...
Go ahead.
I must, I must talk about the court audit.
Let's do that, let's go with the city court now, sure.
I'm gonna defer to Heather on this one. We had our annual court audit, um, just recently, and we talked to, uh, Cindy Garrett, who comes from Boone County, about some way to maybe help Cindy with the filing of cases, because the prosecutor's portal is pretty tight-knit to me. Um, and to keep the separation of powers like we have been, and we've done a really good job of that, um, she suggested that possibly we had a police clerk that was able to help with that, and we, we talked to Bob, and he said he does have somebody, uh, that already disseminates the information to Cindy, so that person would actually have their own access to be able to log in, put the information into the system, uh, scan the file in, and then Cindy can review and approve. So it would cut down that time quite a bit, and Bob thinks that she would be able to do that no problem, because she's already doing part of that work anyway. So just letting you know that that change will come pretty soon, which I have to get the forms filled out with Oskar, the office of the state court administrator, and we'll like it approved, and we'll be moving forward. But our audit came back fine, or, or seemed to be fine when it first showed us here. We had a few minor snags with the way some things were coded in our system, got that fixed, and, uh, everything seems to be okay.
So are you implying that, uh, our government paperwork system is not the best of the most?
Let's just put it this way, I mean, it's, it's all intentioned, and the program is, is helpful, but what they did was they shifted the job of the clerk's office onto the prosecutor. Literally taking, I mean, I, I mean, it's, it is triple entry. I mean, the police force does it, then someone else does it, and then I do it. So, I mean, it really is very redundant, so...
It's sufficient.
That's what I'm rising.
Very nice. All right, any ads may arise? I will let you know that, uh, running the, uh, the ten K last night already, it's a very, very short one. But we had, uh, about twenty-three people sign up, and, uh, ten, ran the ten K, and we're, we're in five K, so, pretty good.
And a motion, you, sir?
I have motion, Secretary Journal, all those in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Close? Thank you all very much.